I'll the meeting to order and stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public announcements, I think Kenny has one and Tom has one, so Ken?
On Saturday, October 20th, the Abington Lions and Friends are going to have the Not So Scary Woods, they had it last year, it's a great thing for young kids, we ask them to come in their costumes, there's lots and lots of free stuff, face painting, touch a truck with the fire department and the police department, the Abington Bank mascot, the children's lullaby barium will be reading stories by a campfire, marshmallows, we're gonna have a movie, free popcorn, all different groups, AMP 103.3 will have their street team on hand, and hay rides, so we ask anybody to come down, that starts at 3 o'clock and it goes through the night.
It's at the Grove?
It's at the Grove, sorry, yes it is, and there's more information, just ask a lion and we'll give you some more information about it, but everything is free.
Great, thanks, Tom?
And then when I had Andy was on Saturday, October 6th, will be the second annual Nick Malafonte three-on-three basketball tournament, be starting at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, with two locations, one at the Abington Police Court Basketball Tournament, three-on-three, and the other up of Green Street, the entrance fee is $100, teams of three, up to four roster, you can pick up entry forms at the Abington Bank, you should have those submitted today, but I'm sure they'll hold it open, and if you just want to make a donation, you can make it, Kiera, the Malafonte Fund, send the donations to the Abington Bank.
And then all the Lions Club is gonna have their card up there, I believe, right?
We're gonna be providing hot dogs and beverages at the-
Hot dogs, drinks.
At the-
At the police station, court.
Yes.
Right.
You'll be there helping us, right Andy?
Free hot dogs. Mike, you have anything, or?
No, nothing.
Okay. Public appointments, under public appointments, we have a joint meeting with the Abington Board of Water Commissioners to fill a vacancy for a member of the Abington Water Commissioners, and we have the two commissioners here, you guys wanna come on up and pull your chair up?
They should open up the meeting.
Yep. Chip, who's the chairman, so you should probably call your meeting to-
6:23, they open the Abington Water Commission meeting.
Okay, welcome guys. And we have applicants of one, right? And that would be Chris Aiello, Chris, do you wanna come up and say a few words?
My name is Chris Aiello, living on Spahn Lane, and I've put my application in for the vacant position on the water board, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity of serving again, since I'm the only applicant, I'll say, you're welcome. But, no, I have a long history going back to working with John and Chip and Superintendent Callahan, going back to 2004 when I was the Finance Committee's liaison to the Water Department, and I have a relationship with those guys, and I'm hoping that my experience in town government and my knowledge of the subject matter will help me shorten, help my learning curve be as short as possible, so I can, you know, get going and contribute to the board.
Any questions, anybody have any questions?
Just, this is for the expired term of John Jacobs?
He stepped down.
Okay, he resigned?
Yes.
Yep.
And when's the term to?
April.
April of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So he would be up for reelection?
Right.
For election, I think so.
Well regardless of the term, if it's filling the vacancies, it's up until the next-
It's only till the next vac- until the next election.
Regardless of the term.
Okay.
Okay, no questions for Chris, thanks Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, so-
What'd he say, he said nothing?
I'll make a motion-
Yep, sure.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Aiello to the Water Commission to fill the vacancy of John Jacobs, who resigned.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you Chris, have fun.
Don't let him start talking, that's all.
Congratulations, Chris.
Welcome aboard.
You have to get sworn in, Chris, so.
I don't have a draw.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, guys, thanks.
Thanks, guys, under action, discussion items, item number one, setting of the special town meeting warrant, the town meeting will be held October 29th, 2012, John?
Mr. Chairman, you have a new version of what was in your packet, so I would refer you to the new version of the warrant, we had a meeting today at 4:00, I had a staff meeting today at 9:30, we have reviewed the capital items that we will be proposing going forward in relationship to setting the warrant, and part of that warrant is obviously the full town meeting, we are still waiting on a certification of free cash, we submitted necessary paperwork to the state on, I believe, the 17th of September, usually takes about two weeks, we're hoping that we would've had it by now, we expect to get it any day when we do get that information out to the board members, we are making certain assumptions on the capital plan that we are gonna have somewhere around $286,198, as you will notice in the, I'll go through this generally and then go through each article, we're, for the first time, we're at the suggestion of Selectman Franny, we're gonna begin to put 10% of the 40% set aside for capital into the trust account for unfunded liability as it relates to healthcare and premium costs, we expect that that number will adjust down as a result of the new health insurance plans that we've accepted, obviously, we're not going to do a true-up of those costs for another year, the, that'll happen next year, and I think that that number will decrease from the 42,000 to 45,000 that we are, we need to fund that account at, and that's in relationship to more out-of-pocket costs that the retirees and active members will have to pay towards the insurance premium, and some of that out-of-pocket costs can be as high as $700 an individual to go to Brockton Hospital or South Shore, so those issues will be addressed in the warrant, if you look at the new warrant that you have before you, you will see Article 1, Article 1A, it's broken out to Article 1A and B, and it's a transfer of free cash to stabilization, that number, we expect it to be somewhere around 445,520, but don't hold me to that number, because I do think that that number will depend upon whatever is certified, okay, same is true for Capital Improvements Trust, we're looking at that number at 286,198, and about $28,619.80 will be going into the unfunded liability account that we established when I first got here, so that's about where we stand with respect to Article 1, any questions about that?
John, just again, what, Article 1B, how much do you think you'd be funding that at, again?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Article 1B, which is the Capital Improvement Trust Fund, is that the 286?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're estimating at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but it's only an estimate, and based on those estimates, we do have a worksheet number that we're working with, and we'll go over the town manager's recommendation to the capital items that we feel that we need to fund as a result of issues that-
Just a question on that, John, as far as the estimates that you have, when do you think you'll have the free cash certified, do you have any idea?
I thought it would be last week, I'm hoping it would be sometime this week, you know, as soon as we get that number, we're gonna get it out to everybody, because that's gonna drive everything that we have here.
Right.
You know, so, but we're making assumptions for tonight.
How about the mailing of the warrant, is that gonna impact the mailing of the warrant as far as you not having the figures, or?
No, because the mailing of the warrant would occur approximately 15, 14 days prior to town meeting, so between now and then, we expect that we're gonna have the certified number, we're all gonna be working from whatever that certified number is.
Yep.
We also have an amount of potential new growth that we could capture, and I'm gonna talk about that for a second as a funding source, that new growth number will not be certified until November, so we can do one of two things, we can hold that certification number until the special within the annual, and I would advise that, only because it's not certified yet, and that's an additional 40 to 45,000 dollars, when we fashioned the budget, we estimated a new growth number of approximately 200,000 dollars, that number went into our revenue portion of the budget, as additional revenue that we anticipate raising, that number came in at 245, so the difference between what we had budgeted and what we actually received, but yet to be certified, is an additional 40 to 45,000 dollars, my recommendation at this point would be to, unless we absolutely need to use it, I would recommend that we keep that number in abeyance until the special within the annual, by that point in time, the certification, the free cash certification number will be certified by the state, and we will have that money available to spend at the special within the annual, that would be my best guess at this point, we do have some other funding sources from within the budget that we are gonna transfer, we expect to transfer approximately 190,000 dollars from the health account, we expect a reduction in healthcare as a result of people dropping off, and the new, the new design, plan design that we have actually implemented of about 100, 298,000 dollars, we're gonna keep 100,000 dollar cushion for people that may come on or off that we have no control over midterm during the FY13 budget cycle, and so, there's that money that's set aside, and so we have about 198,000 dollars that we would be transferring for some of these articles at the special within the annual, the net amount that we're still gonna be looking for, as it relates to all of the expenditure articles within the warrant, is approximately 61,000 dollars that we still need to identify a funding source for. So, as it stands, Article 1 will be at least that 400, hopefully 442,000 going into stabilization, and the balance, as I've indicated, would be going into Capital Improvements and Unfunded Liability Account, is that? Okay.
John, on the 61,000 you're still looking to identify, is a possible source, free cash? Do you just have less to put into the-
Well, no, well, free cash will be divided, the total free cash number will be X number of dollars, of that number, we have set a policy when I came here, 'cause when I got here, we had 1,000 dollars in stabilization, and we had a negative free cash certification of 720,000 dollars, since I've been here, we've had positive free cash certifications, we wiped out the 720,000 deficit, and we have a free cash certification number, which we're waiting on, we think it's gonna be around 700,000 dollars, could be a little higher, could be a little less, and based on that number, we're taking 60% of that money and putting it into stabilization, we, right now, our stabilization number is 660-plus thousand dollars, if we anticipate what our free cash number is going to be, we're gonna be able to put approximately 400,000 dollars into stabilization, that's our first priority, in the few years, we may or may not build a school, but those, we need to have a sustainable way in which we can put money into stabilization to get a better bond rating, our bond rating, as a result of our numbers when I first came here, was downgraded by, from positive to negative, so we had a slight reduction, we told them, them, meaning Moody's and Standard and Poor's, that we were going to implement this policy, when we go out for another big authorization, they're gonna be looking to see whether or not we have put any additional money into stabilization, so we took that 60%, and we're gonna reserve that, we're gonna take the 40%, we're gonna carve out 10% of that 40 to put into the unfunded liability account on capital items, and that number equates out to about 286,198 dollars.
So said another way, all the free cash is certifying is going into 1A, 1B, and 1C, you're not reserving any of that for any of the articles on the rest of the warrant?
Reserving it for-
Any of the other, the 61,000 you're looking to fund some article on the rest of the warrant?
Well, we have always, we have always maintained, at least I have always maintained, and that's something that the board can set a policy on, I think it's always been that we are gonna use free cash for-
I'm not challenging that at all.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just telling you how we got to this-
No, I am completely aware of that, I'm just, I'm trying to come to a leap of, you're looking for 61,000, you're not going to free cash to look for it.
No.
You're looking somewhere else, out in a department budget or whatever, so, I guess you feel pretty positive you're gonna find that 61 hunting in other department budgets, but my question is, if not, does that mean one of these articles is on the list to be passed over?
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, and that would be a last resort for us, because obviously, we have obligations to fund the MOA, we're gonna talk about the MOA for fire, we're gonna talk about the MOA for highway, and, you know, we're gonna go into executive session tonight to talk about the potential settlement, maybe, maybe not, of the highway going forward, but that's all we really have the financial ability to do at this point in time, to be very hon- because I'm not gonna take, as you said, money that's one-time revenue sources and use it for reoccurring expenditures, 'cause that got us in a huge problem over the years where we did that, and then we found out that we, that money wasn't there in the next fiscal year, and we ended up laying off a whole bunch of people, so I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna get, put this down in a position where they're going, we're gonna be doing that, you know, as a result of, you know, fiscally inappropriate policies, it's just, I'm just not gonna do that, not gonna jeopardize our ability to do that because we're giving, give out a raise or something, you know, so.
Okay, Article 2?
Article 2.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Do you wanna, how do you wanna do this?
Put it on the warrant?
You wanna put it on the warrant, or you wanna take it up?
Yeah, why don't we do them as we go, so, I have a motion to include Article 1 on the warrant.
To move.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's unanimous, Article 2?
So now that, now that Article 1 is set, we know how we're gonna spend the rest of our money in relationship to capital, and where we're gonna get the other monies from, so, Article 2 deals with, as we had indicated to you when we set the budget, we had estimated that we were gonna save 200 and, what is it, 260,000?
Yep.
In, by going to another insurance company, because of our inability to get a coverage for workers' comp, because of two very large claims that we recently are dealing with, we are now in what is called a risk pool management policy, that obviously carries a higher number than we had, would have anticipated at the time, so, remember, we established the budget around April, May, voted on it in that period of time, we fast-forward to the end of the fiscal year, we can't get coverage for workers' comp on, in the market, so we have to now go to the risk pool, that has a different cost to us, that cost number, along with some minor adjustments, is about 97,488 dollars, so we did save some money by going to a different carrier, but that net number that we thought we were gonna save, we fell short about 97,488 dollars, and so we're gonna be transferring that money from within the budget to cover that cost, remember, we have 198,000 dollars in savings and healthcare, some of that money will be transferred, we may transfer from other sources as well, we haven't developed those sources yet, but we will develop them over the next couple of days.
So when the Finance Committee makes the motion, then it will be identifying that funding source?
Well, the motion will have all of the sources of revenue that we're gonna draw that money from.
Any other questions? Kent?
In our draft, it started at 88,000, now it's up to 97,488, is that still gonna be adjusted, or is that pretty much what you want, 97,488?
We had a meeting yesterday with the Travelers Insurance, who is the risk pool people that we're insured with, and we also met with Farrell Backland and Richardson Cuddy, which is our agency that deals with the property casualty liability, this is their number as of yesterday, and we don't think it's gonna change.
Right, that sentence, don't.
Yep. Any, I told them, anything above that, they're gonna pay out of their pockets, I'm not, we're not paying anymore.
Any other questions?
I would make a motion to include Article 2.
A motion to include Article 2, is there a second?
Second.
In a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That's unanimous, Article 3?
Article 3 is going to be rewritten a bit, because, and this article may or may not stand, depending upon the availability of funds from within the budget to pay for any salary adjustments, the, under the bylaw, we have to list the position and the amount of salary and the amount of the increase, that table will be developed and put into this warrant, we're still working on that, we're gonna meet with the Finance Committee because it is their recommendation that we are going to be working with, and so, what's gonna happen with this article is that it's going to have a position, an adjusted amount, the old salary, the new salary, so that everyone will see what, you know, what that is, but we're gonna ask that people vote on the, the entire number, although you're gonna see this, because the difficulty here is that, while town meeting votes the appropriation, they don't vote the salary, per se, but it has to be shown by, by law, it has to be shown as to what the proposals are, now, we had a discussion about how that'll work, 'cause the charter requires that the town manager set the salaries for those that he appoints, now, the way it will work is that, you know, we may have a 10,000 dollar, I'm just using a number, salary adjustment, at the end of the day, the town manager may decide that, well, you know what, it's gonna be 8,000 or 7,000 or some number, and the rest could be reserved or used somewhere else, but none of it can, none of the salary adjustments can go beyond what we set at town meeting, so we can go lower, but we can't go higher, so the salaries are appropriated at town meeting, but the town meeting doesn't determine who gets what amount of money, if that makes any sense, and we discussed that, what, for almost 20 minutes today?
In nauseam.
What positions would be included in this article?
Right now, it would be non-union positions.
Mike?
These are all personnel that are covered by the, I mean, people that are covered by the personnel bylaw.
That's correct.
My question is, at one point, we discussed, and I thought it was an awfully good suggestion to reenact the Personnel Committee, and inasmuch as they would be able to, when we go around to surrounding towns and see what positions, like positions are paid in surrounding towns and make suggestions, you know, appropriately.
That's correct.
They, that haven't, that's not coming, or, I mean, that, to me, to me, that would speak volumes if we could have, you know, an independent board that would come and be able to say, well, this is what they make in like similar towns and stuff to do that, I don't know if that's possible or not.
Well, it, you know, it may very well be possible, you know, we may decide that this article is something that, you know, given the dollar amounts, we may decide to hold this off until we, until we can get to that point, and we, and I do think that we should have the bylaw committee in place as we do this stuff, I was under the impression that we had three people that were interested in the bylaw, I sent out, long before our meetings and after the bylaw passed, emails to those who had previously expressed interest, we have one person that's continued, that's gonna be interested going forward, we had one person that said, no, I'm just not gonna go forward with it, and I'm waiting for a third person to get back to me, so, we have at least two, but we don't have a third, so what I did was I sent out another advertising request on the website for anyone interested to fill out the volunteer form and get that information back to us by the middle of the month, so hopefully, maybe on the 29th, if we, if this article doesn't move forward at that point, that we may end up moving the article forward at the special within the annual, you know, with some work from the bylaw review committee, the bylaw review committee does not set the salaries, it's really set by the town manager, and what I did in the absence of the bylaw review committee, I, we went out and did salary surveys of comparable positions in the towns, you know, surrounding towns in the South Shore area, so that, and what we ended up doing is we ended up getting a minimum, an average of what those salaries were, and looked at the existing salaries of the employees here, and were trying to get them to that average number, whatever that average number is, and, you know, for example, we looked at salary survey information for a particular position that the, the only amount, the, was back to 2009, and when we averaged all of those salaries, we were still off by about 4,000 or 5,000 dollars from what we're paying somebody today in 2013, as opposed to what they were, the salary average was for 2009, so we wanna be able to look at that and remain competitive in the marketplace with, you know, comparable positions, for example, town clerks will do what town clerks do that are driven by statute, there's nothing different from that, that's a statute-driven position, same thing is true with building department people, and so as we look at some of this, and, you know, what we're including in their benefit packages and what are not included, some of them are where they should be, and some of them are not, and so that's, you know, what we would choose to look at and provide some sort of recommendation, so, this is not, you know, totally complete, if you decide not to vote on it, and put it off, and do it at the special within the annual, we could do that, we do expect that we would like to put some money here to do some of the salary surveyed article, people that we have information on, we may not be able to do it for everybody, that's what I'm saying.
Tom?
Just to pick up on your question, Andy, non-union people, is there a reason we wouldn't wanna name those positions tonight?
Well, it would be the, we had, we had discussed the possibility of having a full-time Selectment Secretary, Town Manager Secretary, that doesn't exist right now, it exists on a partial basis, so that we would look to try to adjust that salary, we would look at trying to adjust the fire chief's, you know, salary as we had, as we had discussed, and we've discussed that in executive session, but that, that position, we're looking at the Veterans Agent, you know, position, but we may or may not be able to do anything there, and-
Well, we talked about increasing- ............................................................
So, but I guess the point is, when you adjust this and when it goes to the townspeople, it will have every position that you're considering here?
We have to do it by the bylaw.
Okay. So the next question would be, and I'll throw out a number. Let's say you want to fund thirty thousand to fund this. Okay, what if somebody at town meeting gets up and says, that's too much, and we only want to fund fifteen? Are you under any obligations with any of these positions right now to pay them? Or is this, like a lot of contracts, contingent on a town meeting?
Well, these are non-contract employees, so there is no contract. There is no obligation.
Okay.
According to the review of town council today in our four o'clock meeting, this is a request made by the town manager under both the charter and the bylaw to set these salaries. Now, if somebody at town meeting says, well, you know, I think it should be fifteen thousand dollars, and it's so voted at fifteen thousand dollars, and that's what the salaries are, and we will make those adjustments accordingly.
So you would, you would go back and adjust based upon the appropriation that was made at town meeting?
Yeah, I don't have any authorization to go beyond that.
My question is, what, how would you prorate it? I mean, would you go in and say, you know, person A is getting X, and, you know, person B is getting Y? I guess I'm not quite clear how that, how that works.
Well, the town manager is going to make a recommendation of X, X number of dollars for X, all the positions, individually, and it's going to be listed. If your example is that somebody at town meeting says, you know, it should be fifteen thousand dollars, then I will have to go back and readjust those. I can't, I won't know what that number is until town meeting sets it.
Right.
Hopefully, they set the number that we're looking for. They may not. And, you know, so I can't react to something that's not known prior, prior to the vote. But I will say that according to the way the charter is written and how it relates to the manager setting those salaries, really what town meeting is voting is a lump sum amount, even though it's going to be itemized out. And let's say it's forty thousand, fifty, whatever the number is, thirty, twenty, ten, then I will then go back, I have the luxury of then going back and saying, okay, we, you know, we can do a one percent for you, or we can do a two percent for you, or we can do some number, but it's not going to be what was proposed at town meeting, because we don't have the money for that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so again, you will decide, and it may not be a fair proration. It could be, you feel this position is worth more, and they get X amount, or another position, you might not be able to fund it this year, is what you're saying.
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we may have to, you know, and one of the things that we have to be very mindful of as leaders in the community is that we're starting to begin to settle some union contracts. Some of them are significant amount, significant amount of monies. And if we do nothing for the non-union people, you know, we're going to have, you know, some issues that we're going to have to deal with, and so. I'm just saying, from, not, not from a union perspective, but certainly from, you know, a dissatisfied employee perspective, because they haven't been recognized in four years or three years, or whatever that is.
I don't think you'd get any disapproval from this board.
Just basic fairness would, you know, prevail.
And, you know, I think the other piece too is, when I, when I first started here, we were in awful financial shape. We really were. We had nothing in stabilization. We had a negative free cash certification. We've really come a long way in a short period of time, in a down the economy. So we've, we've controlled our finances, I think, to a point where I hope we have earned the trust of those people at town meeting, because, you know, we have been very responsible. So, you know, we're not going to then not be responsible.
So your preference would be to include this right now, and if you can't do anything with it, then we could bring it back in the, in the spring? But you'd like this, just in case?
Yeah, we will, we will pull it, we will either, if it's too late, to pull it before we get to that point. But everything that we end up doing, if we do anything with this article, we'll go back to the board.
Yep.
And you'll have that information before, beforehand. So if you want to, you know, pass it over right now, or you want to hold it off?
Well, that's why I asked. I mean, your preference would be to include it. You can always pass over it at the town meeting if it's not ready to go.
That's correct.
Are you looking for support to either include it, or at your discretion, to take it off the warrant? Because I think we could make that motion also.
Yes, that's what I would like.
So I'd make that motion, Andy, to give the town manager the discretion of whether he thinks it's warranted for the fall, or whether he wants to pull it and consider it at the spring special or annual.
All right, is there a second?
Or we may do a combination. I mean, we'll do some now and then some later, if we have the ability.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it?
Okay, Article Three A, under, under elected officials, state statute requires a separate article for elected officials. The only elected person working in town hall is a town clerk. We put this article on. This was not requested by the town clerk at this point. But of course, she's not going to turn down anything that we can give her if there's money available. And so therefore, that requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, simple majority at the annual, two-thirds at a special, before the tax rate has been set.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To include? Motion to include Article Three A in a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Article Four?
Article Four is the capital article, and I think that we're going to, we're going, we are proposing, how we're going to formulate this, if you look at the sheet that you have here, you're going to be voting on the town manager's recommendations of what we feel that we can, you know, fund at this point. And if we look at that which is in that column, that would equate out to, I believe, the number that we're looking for, the two eighty-six, one ninety-eight. Is that correct?
Would be, if we funded the town manager's recommendation, we'd be in a deficit thirty-one thousand five twenty-nine, as it stands on this paper.
Okay, even, now, does that include two cruisers or one?
Two.
Okay. So we, we will have to go back to the chief and talk with him and see if one cruiser would be something that he could live with. The problem, let me go through this so that we all understand what the urgencies are. With respect to the Board of Health Office, we're looking to cordon off that back portion. This has been a request that has been ongoing for a number of years. I was meeting with some state officials from the Department of Public Health, and they impressed upon me in no uncertain terms that that office has to have a higher level of confidentiality than currently exists. There's our partition. Some of the information that is discussed deals with a person's health, welfare, sensitive issues that require a higher level of security than currently exists. So we are proposing to do the four thousand dollars for that office. Initially, we were proposing to do a couple of other offices as well. But we obviously can't afford to do that, so we're looking to do that. That's a priority. The cruiser replacement is at sixty-nine-five. As you know, we may end up going down to one cruiser, based on where we stand. The fire department has some critical needs, and I want to go over them with you. The radios, the thirty-five thousand dollars, is a match to a larger grant that the fire department has received. Now, that grant is to replace every single radio in the police, in the fire department. Right now, if we were to do that without the grant, it would be several hundred thousand dollars. So our thirty-five thousand will leverage over close to three hundred thousand dollars in radio equipment, which is a pretty decent bang for your buck. We're also proposing the replacement of the antenna. This is the antenna that is really on its last leg. We proposed to do it last year. It was repaired midterm. The repair is holding out, but the chief wants that radio antenna, that antenna replaced. So that's thirty thousand. The station, the outdated scuba bottles, these are the air pack bottles. They are scheduled to expire on twelve, two thousand and twelve, December of two thousand and twelve. If we do not replace them, firefighters cannot go into the buildings and fight fires. So that, that is yet another issue. And so that number is fifty thousand dollars. Now, we may get a grant for that, but the fire chief recently received notification from the federal government that federal grants are not going to be financed until, until November. So we're not going to know until November as to whether or not we're going to get this grant. Given the fact that the bottles expire on twelve of twelve this year, we can't take that chance of not getting the grant or having it delayed beyond December without having the ability to go in and fight fires. And that's really a safety issue for the firefighter and a safety issue for the resident. We want to make sure that when our firefighters go to a scene, they have the ability to provide every, every level of service at the fire scene. So that's the fifty thousand dollars.
So in the event that you did get the grant in November, I would imagine you wouldn't expend this?
We would not expend this money, and we would come back at the special within the annual, and we would fund another capital project with the fifty. That's what we plan to do. The other item is Station One roof seals. When they went up and repaired the lower portion of the metal roof and replaced that, that roof was twenty, twenty-five years old, maybe, or longer? I don't know. They found out that the seals were, were giving way. And these, now, this is a flat roof seal, and so it would be better for us to plan to repair that now at forty-nine-hundred than potentially lose the roof, you know, at some point between now and when we can get to fix it. So the total amount that we're looking for, for the fire department is eighty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. The school department has very critical needs as it relates to the Froley Old School chairlift. That chairlift, if it breaks, we cannot get parts to replace it. Then we would be out of compliance with ADA. We can't allow that to happen in a public building without obviously incurring fines, potentially, or not being able to get our children from one level to the next. And that's, that's a no-brainer from our perspective, that that's something that we have to do. And that is seventy-five thousand dollars to replace that lift.
Oh, it's to replace, that's what I was going to ask, is to replace the current lift?
Is it broken now?
It is, it is not broken now, but if it does break again, which it has in the past, very frequently, we're not going to be able to get it repaired. So we would have an inactive chair. We wouldn't be able to fix it.
I did watch that meeting on TV, they can't get the parts for it anymore. It's just, it's obsolete, it's outdated.
That's, that's correct. And so you're verifying what I'm saying, I think. The next is obviously the high school roof repairs. That's thirty-six thousand three twenty-seven. We are, because we need to get those classrooms up and running, where we had water damage from the seals, we're going ahead and making these repairs with the understanding that this capital item will be, will then go, you know, to complete it and reimburse whatever money the school has spent to get the classrooms active again. That thirty-six three twenty-seven also includes any asbestos abatement, along with the seals, repairing the seals, and getting the interior in a condition that will allow students to go back to those, those rooms that have been affected. So that number equates out to a hundred and eleven thousand three twenty-seven. Now, in the, and I know that there has been some discussion about looking at, you know, some road repair work. We, we actually, Kenon actually put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars down to do that. If there's any of these recommendations that you want to change, we should, you know, talk about them, because these are what I have as priorities, but I want to hear, you know, from the board as to what they would like to do as well. On the second page, there is park and rec. We are not, at this point, there are two issues. Library has an issue with their heating, air conditioning, the same issue that we have here at town hall. We're, we're running on Windows ninety-five. It's two thousand and thirteen. I think, to be very honest with you, that the HVAC system is way too complicated here at town hall and at, at the library, that we may want to look at another, a design or redesign that gives people at town hall the ability to change their thermostat control by four degrees cooler or hotter and get rid of the centralized system. Not get rid of it, but modify it to do that. And that may be a better fix than just keeping the system and updating the software. The software update is thirty-two thousand dollars for the library. Now, they are going to have to go through with that. They're going to have to do that, because hearing from the librarian today in our meeting, she believes that she needs a central system. She just wants to upgrade the software. Now, that number is about thirty-two thousand dollars, just to upgrade the software. It doesn't have anything to do with, you know, fixing the system to make it more operable. So.
I mean, she have an engineering firm look at this? You're absolutely right. And I was on that building committee and fought, because there's something about human nature when it comes to a thermostat. If you can't touch it, and you're uncomfortable, it has a mental effect on you. So you need it to control, just like you said, warmer, colder, where you can turn it, but you can, the computer can say so, you can only go four degrees. So you can go from sixty-eight to seventy-two. Because most people, when they're in a work environment, it's not like being home. If they want to turn it up to eighty degrees, they're going to turn it up to eighty degrees, so. But this, you're right, but I believe if you look at the right software and stuff like that, you can replace the controllers. There's two things you need. You need, you need one so that you have a night set back button downstairs, so that if somebody comes in and decides to have a meeting here, it's programmed off. They can push that button, it will allow you three hours of an occupied mode, so you can have your meeting for three hours, and then it will revert back. That's the only build, the only room in this building that has that ability to do. And I, I've been here before, when this room is like, you know, summer day, it's down to sixty-eight degrees, and, you know, it just, and you're right, the program is outdated and has to be done over, but I would strongly urge you to look for a control company that could also investigate the possibilities of putting those, you know, parameters on that thermostat, so they could have a warmer, colder setting. You could program it so it could be ten degrees. You can program, like you said, to be four degrees. And, you know, the potential is unbelievable with the programs they have now. But I believe if that computer breaks down in your office, the one that's sitting on the floor, that's the only thing that can drive this.
I got it on the table now.
Oh, do you? You finally get it? Well, she must have had to mop the floor or something.
Well, I didn't want to spill anything on it.
I don't know, I would happen to think that, and that's why I was hoping that the Green Committee, I mean, the Sage Committee, maybe it's a little bit too much, would maybe look into some of those ideas or programs, because there might be some grants out there to look to update it, because they could also include, they could give you a rough idea how much you'd be saving energy-wise.
For some reason, I think that National Grid, we went through the National Grid program, and there is an article that we're going to go through here tonight, where I want to fund those improvements, because we're going to spend sixteen thousand dollars to make a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars worth of improvements. And a lot of it, a lot of those improvements are like, when this meeting room empties out, somebody may forget to shut off a light. Well, we're going to, there are going to be motion detector-type lights, which means that we won't have to worry about shutting off lights and conserving energy that way. They're going to change some of the balusters, some of the bulbs, and bring all of those up to a higher level of energy efficiency than currently exists now. And the amount of money that is going to save us, I think it's what, forty-eight thousand dollars a year?
Per year, yeah. Thirty-eight thousand.
Per year, yeah, thirty-eight thousand, I believe.
Sixteen thousand to save forty-eight in the first year and then to get work done, that's a hundred and ninety-one. That's a no-brainer, you do that all day long.
The only problem you'd have is they are motion sensors. And if we were having a meeting in here, they usually last for ten minutes. Every ten minutes, the lights will go out because nobody's moving.
And you know what, that does happen, you know, that, that does happen. And, and sometimes the li, the lights go off, you know, but I think if we have the motion detector and the board of selectmen or the town manager with, you know, moving his arms and so forth, that you probably won't have a motion detector issue.
All right, just, just back to the library upgrade, though, that's not included in your recommendation at this point.
That's not included in my recommendation at this point. However, if the fifty thousand dollars that may not, may or may not be used from the-
For the air tanks?
The, the air tanks, we may want to commit that at the special within the annual to, you know, to the library. That's, that's just my recommendation. Now, when we get to park and rec, there are some amounts of money that I think we can afford. Because I want to go back to Highway for a second on some of their recommendations. Park and rec, they, they need a mower with a bagger. And they're proposing one for twenty and a, a line stripe machine for twenty-eight thousand dollars. Now, why is that so expensive? Line stripe machines are very expensive. We have one. There's a cheaper version when we bought it. And it, not only is it breaking down from time to time and it requires us to, to make extensive repairs to it, but we want to be able to use that as a backup so that we can do two fields at once. And so we can get, it'll be, it's a time management issue for us. If we can get them to not spend all day striping fields and maybe use, and, and break that down to a half a day to stripe fields because we have two machines, it gives us the ability to keep those individuals more productive doing other things in the ground maintenance area. So we think that the twenty-eight thousand will free up our ability to reassign some of those personnel who are now spending a day to line fields. And as you know, you get all kinds of requests that come in every day. And so they spend most of their days lining fields and very few of those days, you know, cutting the grass, although they do do it. It's more labor intensive if we don't have the ability to free up those people, so. That's what we're proposing there for forty-eight thousand. We are out of balance by thirty-one, five twenty-four, by twenty, twenty-nine. And I want to go back to park, to Highway for a minute because the Highway Department is proposing to do sidewalks, drainage. The least of his responsibilities, or the least of his, is a truck replacement, that's a lower priority. That truck has a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on it. It was a, it was a truck that was given to the town. It cost us nothing. They rebuilt it, I think, once. So, you know, that's an issue for us. Last year in the capital plan, we gave the Highway Department a hundred and five thousand dollars to refurbish some of the trucks. I don't know if you remember that. So that is an issue. I want to talk a little bit about storm water, storm water management. Since I've, I've been here, we have made some significant progress in becoming compliant with storm water management. We, we did a flyover that's going to help us map out our storm water drainage as well as do a number of other things. There is a need to fund, a very strong need to fund thirty-nine thousand dollars to go out and actually map out the storm water outlets. That's a requirement that will come, will come into effect in FY fourteen. Most communities have gone beyond that. That thirty-nine thousand will give us the ability to map out our storm, storm drainage outlets and to be compliant with the Storm Water Management Act, which is now in effect. So theoretically, if we don't do it by fourteen, the, the federal government, not the state, could begin to find the cities and towns in Massachusetts that have not mapped them out. We've already paid for the, the actual mapping system. We've mapped the town, we've, we flew, we flew it over. And we expect that we're going to be able to do this hopefully in the spring. Or we are going to appropriate the money so that we can then do it in the fall. The ideal time to do it is, you know, when the leaves are off the trees. So between November and December, if we can do it this year, fine. If we can't, then early spring is probably when we would look to do it. But the thirty-nine thousand is not part of this capital plan. We have twenty in there and we're not recommending to fund it at this point in time. That number would need to change from twenty thousand to thirty-nine thousand. And I will, I want to spend some time as to what the, what does that mean? You know, as far as, you know, the town is concerned. What that means is that we are going to be able to get a number of issues completed. At some point in time, probably in the annual town meeting next year, I will be recommending that we submit an SRF loan at two percent for seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid back over twenty, paid back over twenty years for wastewater capacity issues, looking to see what areas in town we can increase capacity and do it localized, with these localized treatment plants. So we gain control over our capacity that we don't have to go hat in hand to the Brockton folks and ask them for additional capacity that we then pay transportation fees on that are astronomical. And that also includes a submittal of a plan to DEP and to the federal government on inflow, not, not inflow, a loan that will then give us the ability to not only map out, but actually improve those, those drainage areas so that we're not illegally discharging two streams, directly to streams because we can't do that from our, our, our drainage system that we have currently. As it relates to capacity, we have a million dollar, we have a million gallon capacity. We're at nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand gallons in Brock, at the Brockton Treatment Plant. And in Rockland, we have an, an intermunicipal agreement that has expired that is for a hundred and ten thousand. But it's geographically focused, meaning that we can't increase that geography. That, and it's North Abington, that is pretty much part of that area. And we're, we're at sixty thousand capacity right now. But the Rockland plant is over capacity. And so therefore, they can't obviously bring on any additional capacity from, even though we have a hundred and ten thousand gallons, we can't increase that because of our geography constriction. So if we were to look at this SRF loan, part of it's going to be spent looking at the sewer capacity. What areas in town can we discharge to? We may also want to look at taking some of that reclaimed water in irrigating our, our public fields, our golf course, which are discharge points that we can obviously look to do with respect to our discharge into those areas. We have a golf course. We're going to present to you at the meeting on the fifteenth, our public areas that are public-owned land areas. And we have certain planning purposes to do that. And one of them is going to be to provide this map to our consultants so that they could begin to look at areas in town on a tabletop study that could be possible discharge locations for treatment facilities, localized treatment facilities. We expect that there is a need for approximately an additional five-hundred thousand gallons. Brockton has just improved their INI. They're, they're well under the five or six million that they need, that they were at at one point in time because of their INI. Our, obviously, our first look will be to try to purchase that. It's going to be cheaper for us to purchase it than to build a plant. We're looking at twenty to thirty dollars a gallon if we need five-hundred thousand gallons. That's going to give you an estimate of what it's going to cost us to build these localized treatment plants. That's part of the study of the seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. That's going to be paid for by the sewer department. The piece that the town has to pay for would be the, the mapping and the actual working of, and mapping out our rivers, streams, lakes, ponds, wetland areas, bridges, buildings, trails, paths, drainage, coverts, manholes, sidewalks, dams, ditches, utility poles, and recreation outlets, including golf courses. And so when we get to that and we complete all of that, that will become part of our new GIS system. So we will have a fairly sophisticated GIS system at the end of all of this. And we flew the GIS for that purpose so that we could then do this.
That, that's all to, so the-
That's all future.
That's all. That's a lot to think about. Tom, go ahead and then-
Go ahead, Mike, you can go.
It's kind of a, no way to start. You start talking about the heating and, and the air conditioning problems we have and here in the library, both systems are assigned the same date. They're very old. They could break down, likelihood is they're going to. When they break down, the easiest thing is just to turn it on a manual position and it runs morning, noon, and night. We wouldn't run our own homes like that because you just couldn't afford it. So to ignore the fact that we have to make these things is somewhat of a, you know, throwing good money after bad, in my opinion. It might not cost as much as this if we did both buildings together. And it is something that should be done as far as, you know, the comfort level of the employees is important when it's broken down. And, you know, you can't get any heat in the winter or cool in the summer, so. But the downside of three police cruisers, I don't know how many we get typically in a given year, but we, the chief wanted three. I imagine there is, in my opinion, would be some safety issues with not having a vehicle that is not capable of providing the proper speed or wide in an emergency situation to not just the police officers, but to the, the people of the town. You get into the fire department, you talk about the, the air packs, that's, that absolutely has to happen. That's a safety issue and it just is totally unfair for anybody to think that the fireman can, can respond to a situation without the proper SCOTIA packs and, and them functioning properly. You get down to the schools, I watched the, the meeting on the schools. And what happened was we had a leak over the Paul Smith Room. And it leaked through a, the ceiling and through an asbestos, I, I think it was insulation.
Tile roof? It's a tile ceiling?
And because of the children, rightfully so, they had to call in an abatement company and have it, air test qualities and everything like that. The point is, the roof is over thirty years old. And the insurance company now is going to come in and say, well, where is our responsibility when you have something that's gone beyond the life expectancy and it goes into an asbestos situation, it's going to cost us more? So you talked earlier about getting us into a risk pool. And I will guarantee you that if we continue to, to put those types of situations to our insurer that, that we're going to end up in a risk pool as far as insuring our buildings. They further stated at that meeting, the roof repairs at the Aberdeen High School, they needed the Woodsteale School, which was, and all these roofs were somewhere between twenty and I believe forty years old. And each one of the North and Center Schools. Now, we are talking about building a new school, that's obviously going to be, if it comes to fruition, it's going to be down the road a piece. I, I think it's tough to ignore the, the conditions that, that, and the emergency generator, as they spoke to, is just one step ahead of a crank. And, and that is our, our emergency shelter. It's, if, if a catastrophe were to happen, and hopefully not, and we had to use that building, would be relying on a generator that's extremely old and, and doesn't provide enough kilowatts really to, to generate the proper amount of electricity to light the building properly and stuff like that. There'd be every other light and stuff like that. So just, I, I was quite surprised at some of the, you know, the, the Highway Department issues and, and some park and rec. At some point, we had to meet with some gentleman, spoke to me earlier about the mowing of the fields that existed, some of the things that they'd like to see changed if we could do it. And I, I said, why don't we wait until after we see where we're going with this? Because we talk about the financial condition of the town, it's getting better and it is. But we also have, the staffing levels are deplorable in our schools and police, fire, highway, park and rec, you know. And we've done a, a good job, I believe, as a board and administration in addressing some of these things, but we're still left with the fact that they're, we're severely understaffed. And, and I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, is we're, we're, we're putting money into the stabilization fund and I know, and I salute you for that. Maybe that formulated, formula is a little bit, maybe some, more of it should go into the capital fund in, in less of the stabilization. I know that's our policy, but I just think that, you know, the stabilization fund is money in the bank and we need it, God knows we need it, we know if we have to go through another thing. But maybe we're putting the money in the bank and we're not addressing some of our other situation that, that we should be doing. But that's just my opinion. But there, there are some issues that, had I not watched that, I mean, the, the school committee was, it was, it's a pretty good meeting and they went over the, the problems they were going to have. And I happen to think, and I think you and I discussed before about, you know, yeah, our insurance companies are good, but I know all too often when you use them, you notice an increase in your, in your rates next year. And it just looks like we're going to be chasing the insurance company on some of these flat roof problems in New England and the Northeast, especially when we have, you know, children in classrooms and stuff like that right underneath them, so. I, I don't know, it's just, I guess I'm just venting a little bit.
It's frustrating from my perspective.
There was only so much money to go around.
Just to dovetail on, on Mike's comments. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for consideration of, of the Highway Plan. We appreciate it, you know, I mentioned that last week and certainly before we ran. That was, I think, very important to me. And I think the resonance of the town. I think the other thing in my, I guess, life here in Abington, it really hasn't changed. And I think for members of the board and any member of the community, every year when you look at the CapEx or the capital improvement plan, there's always more items that need to be done that in any day you can say this is a number one than, than can be done. As far as the Highway Plan is concerned, I, I think that, I think it's John Gaspie thirty-four, which you mentioned before, barn ratings or whatever. But part of that, in addition to the financial piece, is the infrastructure piece. And I think Abington has done a very good job with limited resources and keep our roadways up to speed. In talking to the Highway Superintendent, I think you, John, is, we get money back from the state, I think it's Chapter Ninety.
That's correct.
But according to the Highway Superintendent, it's not enough to, to deal with, let's call them the, the back roadways or anything but the main roadways. I think we saw a month or so ago, we signed, I don't know if people read it, but Mr. Buckley was here as far as, we signed a petition basically lobbying the state legislature to give more funding and address the issues in roads, bridges, and whatever. I do feel, John, that I, I would love, just like Rockland, the Florida five million dollar barn to address a lot of these issues. I'm not sure if that's feasible. And again, I'm just going to lobby that I, I think to start, you know, to fund this at a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty, however, the Highway Superintendent thinks. And to Mike's point is, again, I commend you, I think the, the community commends you. You've taken a bad situation and you've turned it around as far as our, let's call it our savings. But I think each year, instead of having a fixed number, I think we have to look at the needs. And I, I sort of support that concept. Let's maybe not be so rigid and look at sixty percent of it goes in the stabilization. Let's see if there's some money there that we could take out that if people don't want the highways, you know, maybe it is the schools or some of these other things that, you know, I just sit here and, and again, it's, it's not like it's a story I haven't heard before. And again, every year, there's, there's more needs than we can address. But I would like to see maybe some relaxation on the amount of money we put in the stabilization. And again, you know, my vote, I, I think that you have to start at some point because I think a lot of these- because I think a lot of these back roadway sidewalks, I hear there's a potentially a handicap situation with some of the lights in town where they don't have the beepers on it. But I think we need to start addressing those, not only for our bond rating, but just, people pay taxes. And I think they expect to see their roadways, you know, improved, you know, on a continuous basis.
I don't disagree with that at all. I will tell you, based on my experience, because I've lived through building two schools and renovating two schools to the tune of $36 million in Mansfield. And unless your bond rating, at the time you go out for the authorization, is as high as you can get it, you're going to spend, the taxpayers are going to spend an additional three to four and as much as $5 million on the bond authorization to build a new school if you don't, if we end up not getting upgraded. And I need to do, I think, from my perspective, just on that alone. I mean, that's, you're asking people potentially, if we don't have a good enough bond rating, to pay extra to borrow the money that we need to build a new school. And I know that all of that is in light of, I agree 100%. We need to, I would love to do, you know, a bond authorization for infrastructure repair. We're going to spend 40, 50 million, I don't know how much, on a new school.
Potentially.
Potentially. And that's...
And on top of that, a capping of the landfill, which is...
And that's another huge authorization.
It's another big authorization. There's a lot, you're right. There are a lot of needs in the town. This is a small capital plan. It's only $286,000, if we even get to that. We're not going to solve all the problems of Abington with $286,000. In my opinion, I think this is well thought out. I think John has hit the points that need to be hit as far as public safety especially. And I think we ought to stick, right now at least, with a 60-40 split on the stabilization. We only have, what, $775,000 right now, stabilization, $700,000?
No, $660. I think that, you know, we're going to, we're probably not going to go out to authorization, you know, for anything huge for maybe another year, year and a half or two. The other thought, we've taken, out of the 286 number, we've taken 10% and we're putting it into that liability account. Because I think we need to do it. I agree 100% with you.
Has to happen, yes.
Maybe if you wanted to relax that and you wanted to relax, you know, 5% from...
My only problem with this, when you start to relax things, then you start to relax things more. And then that's when you start down a bad road and you end up...
Then we get in trouble.
Exactly.
And then we get in trouble. And I know that no one on this board, myself, Chris, anyone, wants to go back to a point in time where you had $1,000 in stabilization and you're laying people off because you can't meet your obligations and that. And because you've used, you've inflated that base so significantly that you can't make that up without laying people off. And that really is a big issue.
But won't, if you put the $445,000 approximately in the stabilization, won't that bring it up to $1.1, $1.2 million?
Well, $660, and these are estimates. So please understand that may not be that high.
Out of a $40 million budget, that's not, that's not a lot.
Moody's and the rating agencies want to see...
Was it 5%?
A minimum of 5% and a maximum of 10%. We have a $48 million budget. If we look at 10%, we're at 4.8. If we look at 8%, I figured that out, it's about 3.2, 3.3. So we're well...
Ways to go. I mean, that was the whole purpose of implementing this policy, was to get to that 5% to 8% figure. And if we start sliding back on it, we'll never get there.
The other important thing, too, is we had the phone conference with them, and we told them this was our policy because we're trying to get our bond rating back up. And we said, this is the town of Abington's policy. We put it out there.
Oh, they know it. I mean, if they don't see the percentage monies going in there, that could hurt us as well. Because we were, at the time, we were trying because we had a negative free cash certification of $775,000. We had $1,000 in stabilization. And they said to me, what are you, Mr. Manager, going to do to ensure that you're going to put money away into stabilization? And I said, the only logical thing that we could do was to develop this policy, and that's what we did. We shared that policy with the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen at the time. And I said, we need to do this because if we don't, our rating is going to go down and down and down. We had a...
Triple A positive?
No, 1A positive. And they, because we were willing to put this policy in place, they dropped us from positive to negative, so we're 1A. I'd like to get to a double A because a double A will give us a very good, strong borrowing capability at a very decent rate of interest. So that would be our goal. And, you know, that's what we had indicated to them, that was our goal. And so that's what we're looking at. So I'll do whatever the board wants.
No, no, no. I'm going to go along with what you're saying, and I saw what you're saying. But the frustration is probably, I probably, in speaking more as a concerned taxpayer than I am as a member of the Board of Selectmen, haven't been given the information that ordinary taxpayers don't go, don't get. It is, you know, but, you know, it's nice, I guess you could say, we get the bond rating because we got a lot of money in the bank. But if a house is falling apart, do they look at that? Do they have a look at, well, you know, you've got a lot of money in the bank, but you also have...
Well, they do.
You know, and that's probably what I'm looking at. I'm going to support, and I think it is a good plan because I can remember the concern. I don't think we had money in the reserve account at the time. We were just, you know, really...
But that's fine.
I agree with you. I agree with what everyone is saying here at this table about the need to look at some of these other items. And I do agree with you that these need to be done. If we relax the formula that we promised Moody and Standard and Poor's that we were going to implement, I don't know how they're going to take that. I would assume, let's look at it from this simple perspective. I take you at your word. You tell me you're going to do X, Y, and Z, and then it changes. I'm probably going to be less inclined to believe you in the future if we don't live up to that policy to some measurable degree. And I think if we can do it once in a while and drop it for a little bit to try to do something that's extraordinary that we need to do, I would say, yeah. And yes, I can tell you that our streets and infrastructure and buildings have been falling apart. And those that we, that are in our custody now, and the school department does a great job maintaining what they have. But the last time we built a school in this town was in 1963. And I still talk to people at Martin's who will tell me, it's a new school. And they, you know, they believe it with their heart. And so I went to that school. Why can't, you know, little Johnny go there? I mean, look at me. Look at how I turned out, you know? And reputable people. And they're all have this town at the center of their heart, that they want to make sure that we do the right thing. And those people are just as important as the parents of children who are attending our school system. And you have to balance that.
Ken, did you have...
Yeah. How often do we get a bond rating? Is it only when we go out to do a bond, or can you request what our bond rating is? I mean, can we request that it's improved after the fiscal year? How does it work?
They, bond rating, you know, if we go out and bundle to get a reduced rate, let's say we anticipate that we're going to go out and we have some bonds that are at 3% or 4%. We want to bundle them and go back out because we think we can get a better rate. If it's large enough, if it's 3 million, 4 million, 2 million, 5 million, they will rate us. And they will, and that's what we did. And that's when we got the lower rating. And that's what they'll do. They'll do a large issuance if we bundle things. And even with the lower rating, we still ended up with a better bond number and saved some money. So that, you know, we could look at that.
Well, maybe at some point, if we get the double A rating, we can go back and revisit this formula, you know?
And maybe once you get your stabilization account built up to, you know, a sufficient amount, too. Again, I don't think a million dollars out of a $48 million budget is, that's what, not even 2%? We need to get to 5s.
We touched upon it last week, the money coming in from the airbase, which I think is going to start to increase a little. Does that go, is that always earmarked towards capital?
What is that again?
The airbase money is earmarked towards capital.
Yeah. Two years ago, I think we ended up with $279, $280,000. And we put that to capital. And that, we had, that year, we had a good capital plan.
Is that a policy? Like, we had this policy, a 60-40 split. Is that a policy that all airbase money goes to capital?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah. It doesn't, it cannot. Our policy with respect to one-time revenue sources is we put it, either put it into stabilization or we put it into capital. We don't ever go back to using any kind of capital money to fund reoccurring expenditures. That's what gets you in trouble. That's when you take your credit card and you start paying, you know, for everyday expenditures.
The point I'm trying to make is that, we talked about it at the last meeting, that there's some money in the pipeline coming towards us from the airbase.
It's about $10,000, we anticipate.
Oh, that's it? Okay. I thought it was going to be more than that.
Well, I'll tell you, if it was a good amount of money, we'd be looking at possibly $150,000. But don't forget, before I came here, there was a capital plan that was funded at town meeting, but there wasn't money available. It was put forth by, I think, the prior town manager that anticipated we were going to get a lump sum money from LNR. The economy went south. Those projects, at that time, expected to get this money, they never, never came to fruition. And it was all based on LNR giving us our money in a full swoop. Here's 2.5 million. This is what we owe you. Waymouth, you're getting 3.5, Rockland, 2.2, and, or some number. I don't remember what it was. And that never came to fruition. And so when you look at, when you look at 2.2, 2.5 million, you have a different capital plan than if you have $280,000. And that, you know, and that unfortunately is where we're at right now.
This, what we're voting now is just to include the capital plan.
That's what I was going to get back to, yes.
We can always go back.
Can be tweaked. Yeah, we're going to make, we will, the board will at some point make, probably at our next meeting, make a recommendation on approving or not.
I'll make a motion to accept Article 4.
Include Article 4. Is there a second?
Article 4.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That's unanimous. Article 5, John?
This is 1804, updating the town code. Now, we had so many changes and updates to our code that the town clerk has a budget, fixed budget, that sets aside X amount of dollars. And every, sometimes every year goes back to free cash, becomes part of stabilization or capital projects. What happened here was that we have a bill in hand for the code that needs to be updated. And as a result of that, she's going to be short 1,800 bucks. So we have to, we have to do this. So this is going to be funded through a transfer.
Make a motion to include Articles 5.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just for clarification for people watching on TV, when you say code, that's the charter in the bylaw booklet?
Yes. It updates the electronic version, the paper version, and the actual books that we have here in town home.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Article 6?
Article 6 is, we're just changing the word "postcard" to "notice." That's the only change here. It sounds more, it looks more complicated than it is. But this gives us the ability to send it out carrier pre-sort, which is a cheaper rate. If we kept the postcard language in there that was recommended, we then have to have a name that goes to a household. And that's obviously more expensive than carrier pre-sort. So this will be the cheapest option for us to mail notice. And that notice is still the same. Where you can get, you can go online and get the warrant online at www.abbingtonma.gov. You can call a number and get it sent to you. So, you know, it's going to cut our costs. We spend about $2,900 to mail this stuff, print it and mail this stuff out, or 800...
$2,900, that's correct. Yeah, $2,000 for printing and 900 for postage.
I'll make a motion to...
A second.
Article 6.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it?
Article 7 actually establishes the ambulance enterprise fund. This was an article that was on previous that did not make the vote at town meeting because it was called for form. And as a result of that, this article, this article will end up, as estimated, to give us $70,000 in reimbursement revenue that we need to balance out our budget for FY13.
And make a motion for Article 7.
Is there a second? Tom?
I just, I'm going to play somebody on town meeting floor. You've got salary compensation, okay, I'm assuming for men, in this one budget. You've got the fire department budget that I think takes care of 22, 23 men on the force. We're paying the salary and compensation. What's the difference between both of them? Does some of those men's compensation and salary go over to the ambulance account? I guess I'm not clear.
It supplements. They're, we end up, we end up with a budget of 2.2, 2.3 million. Don't hold me to the numbers. But our actual expenditure from a tax revenue, from our budget, is 1.9. The difference is made up by the ambulance receipts. That's what we have now. We're going to go to an enterprise account. And all of that money is going to continue to stay in the enterprise account, including what you have here for capital outlay. It's a different terminology. What it would be is retained earnings in an enterprise account. It's the same setup, but it gives us the ability to anticipate what our revenues are going to be. The old account that we had meant that we had to have the money in the account before we could then commit it to an expenditure within the budget for the fire department. The only difference here is that we're going to have an enterprise account that gives us the ability to estimate that, make that money, and then pay those individuals and offset our budget. So we have a lower budget. If we didn't have this here, we'd have to raise the 2.9, the 2.2 or 2.3 million rather than the 1.9.
Do other towns do it this way?
Other towns do it a number of different ways. Some have enterprise accounts, some have earnings in anticipation of expenditure, where they earn the money first and then spend it. And some of it, you know, just goes back to the general fund. So there's, various towns have it set up different ways. This gives us the, if we didn't have this, because we spent our revenue budget, our ambulance receipt budget down so low that we would have been $200,000 short. And we would have had to lay individuals off last year. But we went to this proposed enterprise account. That's what we want to fulfill so that we can keep those men employed and estimate that money upfront rather than wait for it to come in.
Again, I apologize. Still confused, but that's all right. Because in town meeting up until this point, we have the 2.2 or whatever it is, 1.9, I think it is, for the fire department budget. When we go to town meeting, a portion of that is funded by raise and appropriate. And the other is by the ambulance fund.
That's correct.
And I've never heard that that's been an issue or observed that on town meeting floor. It seems like nobody gets laid off, you know? It seems to work, that you put money in this sort of little account based on revenue we derive from running the ambulance service. And then at the end of the year, when we go to town meeting, we just take it and we transfer it over to the fire department budget.
What, the way it works is that, under the old system, they spend... What, the, the way it works is that, under the old system, they spend down the 1.9 and they make that money up over the year.
Right.
Okay? And at the end of the fiscal year, they then spend, maybe the last four months, they then spend that money down. And, and they may have an amount of money left over. It could be $25,000, it could be $30,000, it could be less.
And the ambulance fund?
And the ambulance fund.
Okay.
What we're proposing here, and the difference is, is that we don't, we, we will spend the money in anticipation of the revenue actually coming in, because it's an enterprise account. We know we're going to get X number of dollars. Rather than wait for the money to come in, we're going to balance our budget upfront, and then whatever is left in the account goes to retained earnings for a capital project, such as the purchase of a new ambulance. So it's a little different way of doing it, and it's a different way of accounting for it, that allows us to do it upfront. That's all.
Like, what happens if the estimate falls short? What happens if you fall, all of a sudden the ambulance breaks down, we have to hire Rockland or Whitman to do?
Then, then the, whatever, whatever balance is left in the ambulance fund will.
So you're going to actually have two, you're going to have two funds. You're going to have the reserve, ambulance reserve account, and then this ambulance fund.
Very similar to what we have now. We have a stabilization account. This will be their version of a stabilization account to be used for capital items or to supplement their operating budget if they need to, because revenues have fallen short. But revenues should not fall short going forward because we increased the fees. So there should be enough in that account. We expect, and actually, in the, in the FY13 budget, we reserved, I think it was $716,000 or $416,000.
For, for offset expenses?
Yeah.
Well, $70,000.
Seventy.
Seventy, we did for the offset.
Right. But what, what is in reserve? I think that there is a reserve number. I don't know if I have it here.
Is it 200? There it is. Is that it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. As of today, as a result of this account, the first four months, we have $170,797.95 in the account. We reserved $545,000 for expenditure. So that money is, is now upfront versus having to earn it in anticipation of expenditure. That's the only difference. We're able to estimate a cash number of $691,321.99, of which $545,000 is reserved, leaving a balance of $170,000 in that account. It's just, it's just how it's accounted for. It's, it's a better way of accounting for it.
Anything else on Article 7? If not, all those in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Article 8?
This is the ASME number that we had, had, had agreed to, we, this is a prior contract with ASME. $7,527.08, of which a certain amount is coming from, excuse me, Sewer Enterprise, because some of the members in the bargaining unit are from the sewer department.
Yep.
Because that is an enterprise account, it, they have to pay for that amount. So the actual funds that we need would be $8,848 to fund the FY13 budget and the $7,527.08. When you add those two numbers up, that's what we need for this article, which will be transferred from the health account.
Make a motion to include Article 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Article 9?
Article 9 is, is really a placeholder. Tonight, we're going to be talking in an executive session about the collective bargaining, proposed collective bargaining agreement. If we're fine with it tonight, there will be a number that we'll have to then put into this.
So we should include it?
Line item.
Yeah.
Well, I think like the, our previous, maybe make the motion to give the discretion to the town manager to either include or exclude if.
Depending on.
Depending on what happens in the executive session.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Good.
That's my motion.
All right.
Thank you.
In a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Article 10?
Article 10 is the IAFF Local 280, which is the International Association of Firefighters. This agreement for FY12 is at 1.5%, and FY13 at 1%, totals $156,168.59. This article, we already signed the MOA, it'll be going to town meeting. We are looking, we will be looking for an additional $61,000 in the budget to come up with the monies that we need to, to resolve this.
How much?
61.
For this particular one?
Well, yeah, we're short. When we look at all that we're spending, we're about $61,000 short that we're going to have to.
You mentioned that earlier.
We'll, we'll come up with it.
Is there a motion to include Article 10?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In a second. Any discussion?
I just have one question. It bumped up from 100, almost 145,000 to 156. Again, is that going to be the final number, or is?
That is, that is the final number. Actually, what happened was that there was a miscalculation of a 1% in FY13. The chief did not calculate that 1%, and that was the difference. Because we, we had a one and a half, one, one, one and a half.
Anything else?
We'll, we'll make this number work.
All in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed? Article 10 is included. Article 11?
Article 11 is part of what we're transferring from the.
This is the National Grid.
This is the National Grid article.
Yep.
Where we're going to save $39,734.43 at the following locations. Woodsdale, Beaverbrook, Center, North, Folio, High School, Fire Stations, Library, Police Station, Council on Aging, Sewer Department, and Town Hall.
Good stuff.
The total project cost is $191,124.50. If we pay it in one lump sum, we save 15% from the 10% match.
The total cost of the town is $16,245.60.
Yep.
Good.
Make a motion to include Article 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Article 11's included. Article 12?
Article 12 is an article where the hazardous waste day expenses exceeded the amount that we had appropriated. We had a huge showing, more than we anticipated from, in prior years, from Abington residents going to the Whitman DPW garage. We are over expended potentially of $808. So what we do is, each voucher that we give out is valued at about $43 a voucher. So we gave out a number of vouchers to go to Whitman. There are two other days remaining, two other times that people can go from Abington. And right now, we're expecting that there could be some people going to Whitman, Rantham, not Rantham, Waymouth and Rockland. And if they are, we figure that that might come out to about another $200 that we may need. We're already over expended by $808, so.
Is there a motion?
We need at least that.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to include Article 12 is.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion?
What was in their budget originally for hazardous waste?
$2,100.
Anything else? If not, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Article 12's included. Article 13?
Article 13 is an article that I had discussed with the Abington Cultural Council. They're a great group. They do a tremendous amount of work. And they're the ones who had put together the mural that's downstairs that you can see as you come in the town hall. They do a tremendous amount of work. They get $4,540 from the state. It's really a small amount of money for us, and what I have recommended is that we not match that, but give them an equal amount of money so that they can fund more projects. They have a dire need to fund more local arts-type programs. We do a lot for football, we do a lot for organized sports, and I think that we should, you know, this amount of money would be well-spent on grants that they would give. And so what it would give them is a total of, you know, $9,000.
Eighty.
Eighty dollars.
Have we funded this in the past? Have we funded them with anything in the past?
I don't, I believe, not lately. No, no. So this is new, so.
Is this a one-time funding?
Right now, it's, it's one-time, but I would like to work it into the budget every year, if we can, next year, so that they could rely on $9,080 to give out to art organizations. They spend the money very wisely there. It's a great group of people.
I'm not, I'm not debating that. I don't think that's a question. I just think it could be a slippery slope, because what if some other organization comes up, is looking for funding? Like the schools, let's get rid of the users' fees for our kids to play sports, or something along those lines. I mean, it, it does put you in the position that we're going to, you know, review all of those and say no to some, yes to others. I, I agree with you, John, I'm supporting this, but I just think moving forward.
Yeah, I agree.
That we have to be careful in some of these, and I, I agree with you. I mean, some of the art that you see around town, or I think, didn't they have something at the senior center a short time ago? I, I think culturally, it's, it makes Abington that special place to live. But I just think we need to be cautious, you know, moving forward with things like this.
Yeah, I, I, I do agree. I think the caveat here is that, you know, they already get $4,540. We're just giving them a little, the same amount to stretch their grant programs. They, they spend every penny, and it goes to residents in the community who are inclined to do arts and whatever, you know?
Yeah, you're good. You're good. I just.
Does that $4,500 fluctuate depending on the economy, as far as the state granting those funds?
I think they've been pretty consistent at $4,540. They used to get more when the state was in better shape financially. So it does fluctuate, but, you know, at this point, it's $4,540.
We have a motion on including Article 13?
So moved.
Is there a second? In a second. Any discussion? Ken?
If they don't receive the $4,540 from the town, they're still going to, still going to get $4,540 from the state, correct?
They already got it. Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? Four to one? I'm sorry, three to one. Article 14?
Article 14 deals with the gift of land, 4.9 acres, next to, this was part of the transaction with Cape Cod Lumber. They are gifting this to the town.
So it's going to make it easier to clean up the landfill?
Well, it, it gives us a larger footprint on the landfill. Though if we decide that we want to put solar up there to try to pay for the cost of the landfill over time, that, that would be something that we would, that'll give us an extra kilowatt of electricity up there that we could sell on the market.
I think the other point, John, if I recall, for residents, people could assume that because we're getting the land adjacent to the former landfill, that could be increasing our problem, you know, in cleanup. But I thought I heard one of the environmental consultants state before that that wasn't the case, that.
No, no, it's already a problem. We dumped on it.
Yeah, we're, we're on the hook for it anyway.
Yeah. We, we dumped on both sides. We, the, we purchased 100, for $171,900, we purchased private parcel of land. On the other side, where it was contaminated because we dumped on it. Well, this is the same thing on the other side, except we're not paying.
We're getting it for nothing.
We're getting it for nothing. So we already own the liability.
Increase or decrease the cost?
Exactly.
Okay. I'll make the motion to include.
Is there a motion to include Article 14?
I actually, because of my ala confusion, this ethics and stuff like that, I'm going to abstain from voting.
I need a second.
Do you need any other information?
No, he has a business relationship, so he doesn't feel comfortable.
Oh, okay.
We have a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Abstentions? One?
Article 15 is a rescinding article. As, you know, we want to make sure that if, we have an authorization out there, it's like a credit card. You have, you're, you have a credit card for $10,000, you only need it for five. This is the same thing. What we're doing is we're taking back authorized but unissued debt. It's been authorized by town meeting, we're rescinding it. And one of the things that I think, I would like to say, that I think is very important for the resident and taxpayers of this community to realize is that we had an authorization to borrow of $1.5 million to do windows at the Woodsdale Green Repair Project program. The actual expenditure was $943,048. We're rescinding an authorization of $1,031,488 because the school department did an excellent job in managing that program and getting it in well under budget. And I think that that speaks volume. It's not only for this particular project, but for any future project that the school department deals with when it comes to construction. They do a phenomenal job.
And the state picked up the majority of that also.
56% reimbursement from the state. This number of $943,048 is 100%.
That's the total cost.
The total cost. We're going to own this project for less than $300,000.
Yeah, that's very good.
Fantastic.
I think it's outstanding and.
Can't beat it. They did a great job.
And the, and the building looks fantastic.
Yeah, I haven't been up there yet, but I understand it's night and day.
It is.
So I'll make the motion to include Article 15 on the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Article 16?
Article 16 is the ethics article again. It's back. I, I've had a brief email discussion with the Bylaw Review Committee. They're going to meet on this article, but they're not scheduled at this point.
But they've requested it be included in the warrant.
They, they have not requested that it be included in the warrant. We included because it was an article that wasn't acted on, just like the other articles. It's up to the board as to whether or not they want to keep it on.
Well, I think in deference to them, I'd, I'd prefer to leave it in, and then if they do something with it. Tom?
Okay. Just looking at it now, that was sort of a long and, I don't know if I'd call it acrimonious debate, but certainly there were passions on, on both sides when we looked at this. I think it was at the annual town meeting. Now, when it was withdrawn from consideration, my understanding was it was going to change in form, that we're going to be, things changed. But when I look at the previous article to this one, the only thing that I see change is that instead of having to file with the town clerk, every time you're representing some other person, you only have to file once.
But just to correct you, I don't think it was withdrawn. I don't think it was allowed to be.
Okay, give me the.
It wasn't, I think they wanted to withdraw it. It wasn't allowed to be withdrawn.
Was it passed over? Was it passed over, there was some?
No, there was a, the quorum was questioned.
Okay.
Because what the Bylaw Review Committee wanted to do was withdraw it and try to work it out further, but the, my auditors didn't feel that was appropriate at the time, and he wanted to go forward and have a vote on it, and then somebody questioned the quorum, and then the town meeting adjourned without acting on the article. So I think, again, in deference to them, it was being debated at the time, the quorum was called. It should be on the warrant. If they don't want to go forward with it, they can always withdraw it, or if they want to reform it, they can reform it, but that's my position.
Could we leave a motion similar to what we have, is that the town manager thinks it isn't necessary, you could take it off of there, they decide they're not going to meet, or decide they're not going to support it?
Well, I would, I would rather that, at least in consult, in consultation with the Bylaw Review Committee, if they decide they want, yeah, that's fine.
That's what I mean, is if you have a discussion with them, and they decide that they, you know, for whatever reason, they want to go forward.
I, I will do that, because right now, I want to make it perfectly clear that we put this article on, we did put their, their Bylaw, Bylaw Review Committee, because that's the way it appeared last time. But I do know, in my email conversation with Ann Welsh, that they were going to consult and get back to me. So at least that's what I'm waiting for right now.
That would be fine with me.
You want to make that as a motion?
Make that as a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, I, I would just say that they haven't met yet, so is this going to be the final form, or is the motion going to be that it could change?
It could change.
Between now and October 15th?
It could change, yes.
Okay. And that would be based on the Bylaw Review Committee meeting?
Yes.
And, okay.
And I think that they tried to make a motion to amend it at a town meeting, for they weren't allowed to do it.
Well, no, the motion was to withdraw it.
Was it? Or, no, I think that they were.
That was my recollection, was they were.
I, I believe you, Mr. chairman.
They were going to withdraw it, and they weren't allowed to withdraw it, and the vote was going to go forward, and at that point, the quorum was questioned.
Yeah, okay.
So a vote was never taken on it.
But I do think that, and, and the town council was here today at 4 o'clock for a meeting that dealt on the, dealt specifically about the warrant. And one of the changes that I think she mentioned that was made, because it was something that was discussed between the Bylaw Review Committee and Town Council, was immediate family. There was something about immediate family that she had mentioned.
And filing once.
Yeah, filing once.
So.
And, and that.
Well, again, we're going to leave that to them.
Yes.
This is just to include it on the warrant at this point.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there a?
Right, I mean, later on, we're going to go re.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to.
You can decide to support it later on.
Support or not support, it's fine.
We're not supporting it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Okay, item number two, discussion on special conditions in the grant agreement dated July 30th, 2012, between DHCD and the town of Abington for the fiscal year 2012, Abington-Whitman Regional CDF II Grant Award. John?
This is the, this is the $800,000 that the town has received, which is a regional grant application, 400 to Abington, 400 to Whitman. And what this does is, this gives us the ability to spend the money. And, and it has to be signed by the chief executive, which would be the chairman of the Board of Selectment. And this is standard procedure that's required by DHC, it's DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. I, I'd just like to say that a couple of things that are important here is that some of this money is going to go for housing rehab, some of it's going to go for outreach, but $54,000 of it is going to the food pantry.
What?
The food pantry. In, in Abington. I, I had visited the food pantry a couple of times, not, not as a client, but as an interested observer, and they do a tremendous amount of work there. It's a great program, and there's a lot of people from Red Greenleaf to all of the disciples of Red, and his friends down there, that do a fantastic job of providing for really people who are, many who are in desperate need. So we were pleased that, you know, as a community, and as a block grant program, that we were able to get the money to begin with. This is a good reflection on the town. The only other town in this area is, is Rockland. So now it's Rockland, Whitman. Prior to us, it was Rockland. Now it's Rockland, Whitman, and Abington that are going to share in this money. And it's going to help needy families. It's going to help, hopefully, seniors stay in their homes longer, so they can get their properties repaired. Doesn't include just seniors, anyone on fixed income, that's, that meets the income guidelines, would be eligible for housing rehab money. And outreach is very important. We have a number of people who call the Council on Aging, wanting us to check on their mother, who's alone in a house, and they've tried to reach her, and they couldn't reach her, and, you know, so they, it gives us the ability to outreach to them, put together a social service-type program for them, and coordinate their needs, which is very important, and be able to communicate that back to their loved ones, who may live in California, or Oregon, or Alaska, or, it could even be neighbors of.
One question, John, on how do, how do folks find out about the rehabilitation, as far as qualifying and?
They're going to outreach to the target areas?
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they'll, they'll be mailing to the target area.
Okay, great, thank you. So you need a motion for authorization to have that signed, or?
Yes, well, it, it will allow us to begin spending that money. Is that it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any restrictions, is that anybody in Abington? I was led to believe one of the prime.
It's only in the targeted areas.
Area.
And just approximately in this town?
Mustafield, too, I think.
North, North Abington?
What's the base?
No, like the center, wasn't it? Was it North Abington? I know it was Abington's center and that.
The center in North Abington.
Mustafield, yeah.
The Mustafield area.
The Green Street area?
I don't, was that one? Yeah.
That's what I thought.
I think that was.
Yeah, the map is online.
Can I just speak, is it, is it online? Just send me the link, or is it just on the homepage?
Website.
You go down, and you'll see target areas.
No, no, it's on the, on our website.
On the front page.
You'll find it.
Go down, target area, click on it. And if the other area is the Green Street, and that whole area, really, it's the older area, Housing Stock in Town.
Right.
That, that's basically the areas that are involved.
You saw the correction on here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I, I do. So do we have a?
I'll make a motion.
Make a correction.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? It's not all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
It's unanimous.
Item number three, public comment. Can you approach the podium, please?
You've got to get up, you know, what are you, you don't get any preferential treatment.
You plan for something else?
I want you to know that, that I did not.
This will be longer than.
Quick, no, it'll be quick. Chris Ayala, Huntsman Lane.
Town manager's report.
You mentioned, you talked about sewer tonight, John, for a couple of minutes, and I was at the old quality planning council meeting last week, and I have some fresh information on sewage, that some of it's pertinent to us, and some of it's just like an FYI.